Row call please.
Board President Shi.
Here.
Vice President Vishal Patel.
Here.
Ms. Peng.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Mr. Romano.
Here.
Ms. Anjuna Patel. Mr. Lugo. Mr. Ronak Patel.
Here.
Mr. Eriko. You have a quorum.
Opening statement.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Law 1975, C-231 Sunshine Law, the Edison Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education Administrative Offices. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger.
Thank you. So today is one of my favorite school board meetings, and we definitely have a packed house today. So we probably violated the fire code a little bit.
I won't tell if you won't tell.
So congratulations to all the students, to all the advisors, and to all the parents. Every year, we have more and more students get recognized. It's the testament of what they have done, and what your advisors have done, and also what your parents have done, be it the chaperones, be it the bankers who finance all your trainings and everything. So when you go home tonight, please thank your parents, and tomorrow morning, go to school, thank all the advisors and coaches who had put you over there, alright? So without any further ado, I'd like to have Dr. Superintendent make a couple comments.
Thank you, Board President Shi. Good evening, ladies and gents. How are you? Alright. You could do better than that. Come on. How we doing? Yeah. This room is soundproof, so we're in good shape. We can yell, we can scream. So listen, as we kind of gather for our final Board of Education meeting of the year, I just want to take a moment to, you know, kind of reflect on what an incredible year we've had and the achievements of not only our students that we're celebrating here today, but our staff, our administrators, our Board of Education members, as well as our school community. You know, in a few short days, we're going to be celebrating graduations, moving up ceremonies, just kind of a reminder of the strength and pride that you as community members and ourselves as educators have in the promise of this absolutely fantastic district. It's such a pleasure to serve here. Tonight, we're especially proud to recognize outstanding student achievement across the board for all of our schools. Each year, this tradition kind of allows us to shine a light on what makes Edison great and some of the great things that we're doing here. It's a celebration of their hard work, their commitment to their academics, as well as their overall enthusiasm for learning. So as we close out the school year, I want to wish everybody a safe, restful, and enjoyable summer break, right? For those of us that are graduating high school, best of luck, best wishes in all of your future endeavors. I myself have a high school graduate that will be graduating on Thursday of this week, so I understand the joy. Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you. I appreciate it. So I understand the joy and the anxiety, right, that's associated with that. And I'm looking forward to next year, right? More expanded programs, deeper partnerships, and just continued efforts and a combined effort of all members of our community to make this place great. And I'll see everybody in September, if you're not graduating high school, right? Can I give just a couple public service announcements, if that's alright? Just, you know, a little bit of housekeeping information. We had an end-of-the-year survey go out, parents, staff, and students in grades six through 12. I encourage everybody in the room to, if you haven't filled it out already, please go ahead and do so. It provides us with great feedback and the ability to make actionable change. Just a couple little diagnostic information that we have here. We've had over 2,000 students respond already, and it's only been out like a couple days. So congratulations to the students. If your friends haven't filled, yeah, if your friends haven't filled it out, tell them to go ahead and do so. I've got about 612 staff members, so we would appreciate, the more the merrier. We want to get feedback about your work environment and, you know, the things that we need to improve upon. And family members, we've got about 481, you know? We could probably do exponentially better. So if you haven't done so, and it takes just a couple minutes, be greatly appreciated. And we're also going to be launching like a new way to communicate with parents too. It's called Parent Square. You might be getting a text in the next couple days in relationship to signing up. Just a great way to kind of communicate two-way. We're going to do it district-wide as well too, so that the method of communication in kindergarten is the same as in 12th grade. So without any further hesitation, I'm going to turn it over to Board President Shi. I want to thank all of you again for a wonderful school year, and best wishes to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Dr. Alderelli. So we're going to change the order of the agenda a little bit, and we have our seniors who are graduating this year, going to college, and we're waiting for the Edison High student to come up. So before they depart from our district, we want them to give us a report from their each schools, so you guys can know what's going on in these high schools and what's good about Edison. So with that, so I don't know, whoever, Bill or, yeah?
Yes, thank you so much. So good evening, everyone. My name is Bill Tang, and I am one of the two co-presidents of Student Council at JP Stevens High School. This is my other co-president. And so as this school year is coming to an end... As this school year is coming to an end, we are shifting our focus to end-of-the-year preparations across academics, athletics, extracurriculars, and school operations. So at JP, we are finalizing and acknowledging our students for the hard work they have put in throughout the year with final assignments and end-of-the-year banquets and celebrations. We pushed out our final editions of The Weekly and Hawkeye, which is our school magazine and newspaper respectively, and will be administering MacBook collection, locker cleanout, yearbook distribution, and graduation practice for our seniors next Monday. And furthermore, I am thrilled to share that the senior class enjoyed their long-awaited prom earlier last month at Addison Park. It was a tremendous success and served as a fitting culmination of the hard work the senior class council and executive board had done over the past four years. Moreover, earlier this month, we hosted our senior awards night in our newly renovated auditorium, which was constructed beautifully, where we honored our seniors for the hard work they have put in throughout the four years. And lastly, Student Council is concluding the year with our final event, which is Battle of the Classes, which will be held this coming Friday. We anticipate the event to be a fun competition between our four classes as a final celebration to close out the year in a memorable and exciting way. And with that, marks the end of my report, and I just want to give a few words to the Board of Education as a graduating senior who had been with Student Council since basically freshman year and as an officer for the past three years. It truly has been an honor and privilege to represent JP, and I'm deeply grateful for the guidance, support, and opportunities to grow as a leader and serve my school community. And thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Savvy, anything you want to say?
Yeah, I just want to echo off what Bill said, speaking, even if it was just for one year, all these Board of Education meetings has been so insightful, because not only was I able to present all the information to Edison, but by collecting the information and talking to all my students, I really learned a lot about JP and our student body. And I just want to thank everyone on the board again for giving me and Bill and the students at Edison High as well an opportunity to speak and share about our school. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So why don't you tell parents which college you guys go into?
Bill can go first.
So in the fall, I will be attending Harvard College.
Savvy?
Not as exciting as Bill's, but I'm going to IU Kelly in the fall.
Thank you. You guys have done a great job for the past year, so here's a little certificate from the Board of Education. Let me present it to you guys. So Derek from the Edison High School is probably stuck in traffic, so we'll present it to him when he comes in. Now, without further ado, let's start the, you know, the main event of this evening, the student recognition. Mr. White, take it over.
Thank you, Board President. My name is Tom Wood. I'm the district supervisor for Visual and Performing Arts, and I'd like to welcome all of you to our June Student Recognition Night. Part of the reason I was standing up here so long was because I was afraid if I walk away, I don't think I could have got back with as many people that they are here, so I figured it was best to stay in one place. I'd like to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Alderelli, and our central office administration for hosting the event. I would also like to thank all of our principals and vice principals in attendance today. We humbly ask that students being recognized, please stand at their seats when their name is called, or stand by the wall. You might not have a seat. This year, we're trying something new by adding a lovely balloon arch in the lobby for photos. Give a big round of applause for Ms. Heather Daniel for arranging that. And to facilitate that, we'll be doing two brief intermissions after each grade level, so please wait to leave at those scheduled times. With that said, let's bring in our program. First, I would like to introduce R. Kristof as Vice Principal of James Monroe Elementary School, home of the Owls.
Thank you, Mr. White. James Monroe batting leadoff tonight. Dr. Alderelli, Board of Education, the Edison Township viewers at home, and our Edison community here in the auditorium. It is my absolute pleasure on behalf of the James Monroe community to recognize two of our Owls, Peter Martel and Anika Vinod. Under the leadership of Lisa Romeo, these students were selected as student delegates to speak at the famous Ford, sorry, Lincoln Theater, sorry, Ford Theater. They are part of the National Auditorium Fellows Program in Washington DC. They were two of 20 selected to speak. Anika did an original piece titled "Just One Person," and Peter did JFK's address to Rice University on the nation's space effort. It is now my pleasure to introduce the awesome principal of JMI, Ms. Donna Abdemarko.
Good evening, everyone. I am honored to stand before you as a proud principal of James Madison Intermediate School to congratulate the following students for being accepted into the New Jersey State Elementary Choir under the tutelage of our wonderful music teacher, Ms. Becky Tarby. Students, please stand when I say your name. Ayana Patel, Anya Patel, Hansika Hari, Samara Khudari, Drew Van Nanda Kumar, Akshara Mishra, Sri Nandini Bandaru, Asta Chidrala, and Anvika Santos. Congratulations, Elementary Choir. Thank you, Elementary Honor Choir students. Next, I would like to recognize our Odyssey of the Mind team. This is the second year that Odyssey of the Mind has returned to JMI, and I am incredibly proud to highlight our Cooking with the Books team, who earned third place at the state competition under the outstanding guidance of Ms. Ruttler and Ms. Misko. Students, they're excited. Students, please stand when I call your name. Hasyat Ataneni, Yuvan Navarian, Sedant Badawaj, Prisha Sharma, Mahi Gupta, Vian Rati, and Anya Shakar. Congratulations. I would now like to introduce the amazing principal of Menlo Park Elementary School, Mr. Duggan.
Congratulations to all the celebrants this evening. I'd like to thank our coaches, Mrs. Seleski and Mr. Hackworth, for doing a fine job with our two Odyssey of the Mind teams. First-place regionals, Cooking with the Books, goes to Tanvi Kishore, Tara Vansanth, Malavachani, Reya Singh, Neeksh Babariah, Isha Nitin, Anika Gupta. That's the first team. And congratulations to Astronomical Odyssey, second-place regionals, the Ranta Fuzka Creativity Award. We have Aditri Goyle, Anikiya Sahu, Sriyanka Mohan Shranthi, Vihana Gupta, Neve Singh, Arna Chatsky, and Krishna Sudhakar. Congratulations. And now I'd like to call up the amazing principal from MLK, Regina Paprasanos.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Alderelli, President Mr. Shi, Board members and guests. It is my honor to recognize the hard work, character, and accomplishments, oh, this is what I get, thank you, of our outstanding Martin Luther King students who exemplify the heart and spirit of our school community. Tonight, we recognize three teams and their Odyssey of the Mind placements. The first team, under the advisement and coach Kim Kai. These students competed in the Odyssey of the Mind's problem four Save Me structure in place. I am so proud to announce, they won this year. First-place regionals, first-place New Jersey tournament, and for the first time in Edison, first-place world. So here, please, if you hear your name, first of all, I really want to, for 15 years, Ms. Kai has been a coach, and I really have to give her credit for that first place with all the kids and parents. So if you hear your name, please stand up to be recognized. Akash Redispanti, Anika Dubey, Shaquet Keelangi, Berhandin Jirawala, Ame Mashawari, Shaharsura Sharavani, and Arika Chukula. Thank you so much. Okay, the next group, I am so proud of. So under the advisement of Coach Regina Ramos, this group competed under problem two, McAnimal Sidekick, and placed, here we go, first place in regionals, second place New Jersey State Tournament, and seventh place in world. When you hear your name, please stand up for recognition. Nish Badiani, Reya Chakravarti, Srija Ghosh, Ria Gupta, and Amog Rathen Kuvari. Congratulations. And we have one more group. Oh, and Prudusha, Prudusha. And for the next group, under the advisement of Coach of Kim Kai, the students completed in Odyssey Mind Problem Five, Astronomical Odyssey. They won first-place regionals, first-place New Jersey State Tournament, and sixth place in world. So I have the wonderful students, Anika Jane, Janayna Khan, Myra Massan, Sapashi Mishra, Sanvi Shahan, Ashika Shawani, and Darshika Sinagal. Again, so proud, thank you so much. I conclude the elementary schools.
This will be our first scheduled intermission, so if possible, before you evacuate, try to create as much room as humanly possible for people to exit. Also, watch what wall you lean on, because obviously the lights are there, and they're very, very sensitive, so I figure we'll get all the public service announcements out of the way. So this is the first intermission. It'll be five minutes, and we will resume at 7:28 Samsung time. Hate all you want, Samsung time.
Okay, so we're going to resume our meeting. We're going to resume our meeting. Alright, so now since the representative from Edison High, Derek is here, just got stuck in traffic, so I'll let him share what's good about Edison High with you guys. Derek, go ahead.
Hey, everybody. Before I give my Edison High report, I'd like to give a big thank you to the Edison Board of Ed for guiding us through a great school year, so I'm going to give them a big round of applause. I'd also like to personally thank President Shi and Dr. Alderelli, as well as the rest of the board, as well as Mr. Ross, for giving me the opportunity to speak at these meetings. People need to hear that their thoughts, opinions, and feelings matter, and President Shi, you've shown that the student's voice does matter, and the genuine interest you've shown in them is greatly appreciated. Now, for my EHS report, vibes around the high school are awesome, with schoolwork winding down and end-of-year celebrations in full swing. We've had our Juneteenth cookout and senior sunset over the past week. Tomorrow is the senior barbecue, and this Friday is Senior Day, where we will have our senior breakfast, followed by clapouts at each elementary school. And that's all I've got for you. With that, my presidential term officially comes to an end, so everyone have a great summer.
Thank you very much. Derek, tell everyone which college you're going to.
I'm going to Rutgers.
Yes, Rutgers! So Derek, this whole year, you've been a great help, a very good student voice, and thank you for coming to every board meeting and share what's good about Edison to the public and to the board. To recognize your effort, it's a small token from the Board of Education, a small certificate. Let me present it to you.
Okay, so now we're back. After a brief discussion with my colleagues, we decided we're going to do one additional intermission after Herbert Hoover Middle School presents, just to make more room for our students to get into the auditorium. So gotta be recognized, you gotta be in the room. Next presenter I'd like to welcome is Dr. Joan Valentine, the jemazing principal of John Adams Middle School.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to kick off the middle school recognition and introduce the jemazing students from John Adams Middle School being recognized tonight. These individuals have exemplified respect, responsibility, and excellence in and out of the classroom, and I'm proud to honor their accomplishments. Earning a perfect score on this year's PSAT 8-9, Nikita Brahma, Shravat Sajiri, Tanvi Koma, Nithra Ramkumar. Congratulations to the following NJMEA Honor Choir students, led by Mr. Borha, Rishiteth Monet, Sachi Nagar Bandhahara, Via Sinha, Shreya Ashok, Anushi Astana, Sarabi Rahul, Rayan Shrasagi, Reda Nandakumar. NJACDA All-State Honor Choir, Luluwa Merchant, Debakshi Rachoudary, Anushi Astana, Rayan Shrasagi. NJACDA All-State Junior High Choir, Kavya Butteri, Vedha Nadakumar, Priya Decharni Suda, Sachi Naragambahara, Panavi Daina, Via Sinha, Devanch Naji. Led by Mrs. Montana and Mr. Warren, congratulations to the following CJMEA Region Orchestra students. Guranath Varansi, Sriansh Kandapalli, Lakshman Ramajan, Jeffrey Heisch, Prisha Patra, Myra Ahuja. NJMEA All-State Orchestra, led by Mrs. Montana and Mr. Warren, Myra Ahuja, Jeffrey Heisch, Prisha Patra, Guruanth Varansi. Congratulations to the CJMEA Region Wind Ensemble, led by Mr. Mulcahy and Mr. Fassa, Daniel Zhao, Ahmed Sayed, Akash Sangupta, and Kevin Zhang. CJMEA Region Symphonic Band, Jun Hong Wu, Athri Paspoleti, Sahaj Shah, Ritvik Mazundar, Advik Nagesh, Arjun Joshi, and Isabel Durick. NJMEA Region Percussion, Agria Ganesh, and Aiden Wu. Directed by Ms. Seago and Mrs. Kramer, congratulations to students who were awarded at this year's FCC LA State Leadership Conference. Nivan Parikh, Ranav Shah, Anhad Singh, Arin Singh, Sarah Dash, Ayana Garg, Yana Makwana, Zoya Mariam, Shreya Mishra, Arna Nandrajad, Isha Patel, Saina Patel, Anvi Patil, Avni Rathi, Manya Ravinatola, Lakshmi Rendatata, Anusha Senthil, Sayuri Shah, Nija Ambukar, Manav Min, Achinta Ashok, Gia Baderji, Sarvin Botindi, Gia Bathri, Samara Chushri, Avni Chopra, Maksha Chatteri, Anushri Gothamun, Neve Gura, Yoga Gundla, Sanaha Joshi, Anya Metta, Kira Maktuyar, Shazia Panjwani, Ariyan Patel, Richak Patel, Rana Rajput, Aditya Rani, Aparna Rani, Shreya Reddy, Samhita Samkutari, Mitashah, Tirth Shah, Himakshi Sharma, Sanvi Shetty, Mitra Srinivasan, and Alaya Varma. Congratulations to the JAM's Great History Challenge Regional winners, Arnav Gadam, Vansh Badwa, Anaja Palakadram, CM Senthil, Keisha Prasanna, Jacob Akaran, Aiden Anath, Rudy Kalori, Hashravadin Parikh, Ashi Suha, Manav Maniar, Avantika Santath, Shurya Contractor, Arnav... Arnav Mandajeri, Arnav Basavarrage, Shloop Bala Arya, and Krishan Suda. And congratulations to Regional Winner and National Qualifier, Sia Sangani. Congratulations to the JAM students who competed at the National Middle School Aerial Drone Championship and won first place, Tirth Shah and Sonish Kala. And now announcing for Herbert Hoover Middle School, the amazing Mrs. Dara.
Okay, good evening. On behalf of Herbert Hoover Middle School, I'm very proud to congratulate the students and their families for their many accomplishments. Mr. McGrath is currently hosting our sixth grade orientation, but wanted to share that he's extremely proud of you all. I'd like to start by recognizing the Herbert Hoover Middle School Boys Basketball Team under the guidance of Coach John Grinelli for a first-place undefeated season. Aiden Banks, please, yes, play them on. Adam Boslett, Gianni Senicola, Deklan Kunen, Joel Cruz, Benjamin De Silva, Jabari David, Kason David, Madden Goncalves, Jameer Jones, Logan Latham, Jaden Lopez, Ethan Melendez, Oni Kachi, Okoli, John Ryan Renzi, Cameron Ruth, Azrael Spurgeon, Vincent Trin. Next, I'd like to congratulate the Herbert Hoover Middle School Track Team under the guidance of Coaches Anthony Vesuvio, Rebecca Nesterwitz, and Dr. Jacob George for their first place in the superintendent's Invitational Track Meet. Sixth Grade, Carolyn Bejarano, Chaswita Shoretty, Leila Edwards, Kaylani Green, Jaslin Incarnation, Ace Roberts, Ross Roberts, Louise Mendez, Arjun Junathula, Parth Shah. Seventh Grade, Logan Latham, Mason Pisikala, Ritvik Raj, Neela Kandin, Valen McGregor, Juan B. Gregorio Costa, excuse me, Vincent Trin, Liliana Petrovsky, Pavishna Manikanda, Kamani Fleming, PJ Shitu, Aliza Bardwaj, Benjamin Owusu. Eighth Grade, Elijah Mansarath, Siddharth Mani, Kason David, Zeki Ikijindu, Advay Admitkumar, Anuradha Vijay, Kalila Chapman, Madison Pishwa, Gianna Erwal, Michael Arrowgun, Emma Fang. A special award goes to Matthew Puelo for being accepted to the MLS Next League Player. It's the official youth development program of Major League Soccer in the United States. Okay, now for the first chair, Central Jersey Music Educators Association Award goes to Tia Metta under the advisement of Joseph Cunningham. Okay, and we want to thank the advisor, Christine McAvoy, for guiding the students for Battle of the Books in winning the following divisions. First place for Grade Six goes to Gori Krishna, Anukshanar, Sarah Nasa, Nishidi Verigewala. First place, Grade Seven, James Amigbor, Hita Kanti, Zena Palanassami, Sondas Rashid, Nidvitha Rachella, Vihan Vaas. First place, Grade Eight, goes to Johann Enanto Johnson, Mokshit Menam, James Soames, Vishnu Venkat, Anurudha Vijay, Ishan Yadav. And the following awards were earned by our FCC LA Group of Students under the advisement of Joanna Di Francesco. So our gold clever cookie for a cause was Misri Kansara, Kavya Conduru, and Gina Metta. Gold Level winners for the Food Truck Fuel was Sonia Chef and Tanisha Shetty. Gold Level for International Food was Heat Patel and Dev Jani. Gold for International Food again, Dia Kundani, Tanya Shetty, Eva Mansukani. Gold for Toys That Teach, Eva Mansukani. Silver for Lunch-In Menu Showcase, Avery Gosch. Silver for Food Truck Fuel, Tia Metta, Amber Ranmarin, and Rayan Sayed. Silver for Reinventing Spaces, Shreya Metta, Tasha Kadakhia, Anvita Parisa. And Bronze for Storybook Ethics is Orawala Ayedi and Deekshita Sandhu. Okay, thank you very much, and at this time I'd like to introduce, oh wait, our intermission.
Wait, 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 wait. I'd like to come to the podium, please. Like to thank you for your 30 years.
Thirty-three, yeah.
I'm sorry?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, I'm sorry, I cut you short. She's retiring in the district, 33 years working the Edison School District. Good luck, thank you for your service, really appreciate it.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Now, Tom. Now, this is the beginning of our second intermission. This will also be a five-minute intermission, and we will continue at 7:50. Welcome back. For those of you just entering the room, we do now have seats available, and I don't know if you smell it, it's called breathing room, it's fresh air, it's oxygen, because now it's getting a little bit more empty in here. I'd like to reintroduce Ms. Dara, just to finish up Herbert Hoover Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I need to make sure that I recognize and I apologize that I... And there you go, that's exactly how I feel, because we have a very special basketball player among us. I'd like everybody to be introduced to Kason David. Kason, would you please stand? Kason David is a very special player on the Herbert Hoover Basketball Team. He scored his 1,000 career points this year. He's the first player in school history at the middle school level. He ended his season with 1,128 points under the guidance of Coach Grinelli. Congratulations, Kason and his family, for your extreme accomplishments. We know you're going to do amazing things in the future, and we look forward to seeing everything that you accomplish. Thank you.
Up next, about to tell us about all the wonderful things that are happening on Division Street, Dr. James Falco from Thomas Jefferson Middle School.
Good evening, Edison. On behalf of Mrs. Endon, our principal, and the entire TJ community, we'd like to thank the Edison Board of Education and Dr. Alderelli for the opportunity to recognize student excellence beyond the classroom. Jaguars, please stand when you hear your name. First up, under the direction of Head Coach Kelly Ryan and Assistant Coach Eric Braining, I would like to recognize the following students for winning first place in the Edison Township Girls Basketball Tournament. Destiny Burkhardt, Emma Fajardo, Pehu Gupta, Manasvi Haldekar, Maleka Elamahana, Sarai Miller, Delaney Pellicane, Gabriella Shuck, Ali Shao, Kaylee Smith, Jerry Ann Tan, and Tracy Whitney. Under the direction of Head Coach Donovan Cregalo, I would like to recognize the following students for winning first place in the GMC Wrestling Tournament. Michael Brody, Suche Karna. Under the direction of our esteemed band and orchestra teachers, Mr. Lopez and Ms. Pascarelli, I would like to recognize the following students who are representing the Central Jersey Region Band and Orchestra. Wyatt Botzko Bridge, Aaron Agarwal, Shreyas Guru. Well done. Under the direction of Advisor Hugo Estevez, we would like to recognize the following students for placing in the FCC LA Spring Leadership Conference. Arian Oswald, first place Junior Bread Bacon Category. Samaya Wimberly, second place Fashion Runway Evening Wear Category. We would also like to recognize the following students who are winning second place in the Junior Fashion Runway Evening Wear Category at the FCC Spring Leadership Conference. Forgive me again, Samaya, if you're here, please stand up. Excellent job. Under the direction of Advisors Holly Rebovich and Mona Patel, we'd like to recognize the following students for placing at the Regional Science Bean. Vedant Dukli, first place. Rayan Schmette, first place. Rayan Mirkar, second place. Surak Vemalapali, second place. And Pranav Prasanna, third place. Under the direction of Advisor Johann Shin, we'd like to recognize the following students for placing at the Math Counts Competition. Furkan Nadeem, first place. Under the direction of Advisors Kristen Peterson and Erica Levy, we'd like to recognize the following students for placing first at the Regional Odyssey of the Mind Competition. Anvisha Anan, Nori Chatrinay, Arham Shah, Kovadya Tanwar, Chris Trevetti, Alessandra Batista, and Janice Lee. And last but certainly not least, we would like to recognize the following student for a perfect score on the PSAT 8-9, Sanvika Govindaraj. Congratulations again to all the students and advisors recognized tonight. It is now my pleasure to call up the extraordinary Principal of Woodrow Wilson High School, Woodrow Wilson Middle School, Ms. Plodden.
Thank you. On behalf of Woodrow Wilson Middle School, I would like to sincerely thank Dr. Alderelli and the Board of Education for recognizing our outstanding students tonight. Congratulations to all students and their families for this special recognition. So we're gonna start with FCC LA, our advisor, Mrs. or chef, Ashley Welch, and our students, please stand up to be recognized. Second place gold, Anika Chandareddy, Akshaya Santishkumar. Third place gold, Amaya Karakot, Safina Mansuri. First place silver, Saisha Kenjali, Driti Narayan, Dia Thomas. First place bronze, Manya Oja. Congratulations, FCC LA. Next up is our Odyssey of the Mind Gateway Regional and New Jersey State Winners under the advisement of Mr. Thomas. First place New Jersey State Finals Tournament, first place Gateway Regionals, Jap Nadat, Damahi Samat, Sunvir Soyn, Neve Chakrabarti, Avani Parashar. First place Gateway Regional, second place New Jersey State Finals Tournament, Rayan Bodu. Sharanya Gunthamadaghu, Sarah Asakumar, Narain Hariharan, Nathan Akarazi, Jasmita Sabapathy, and Ayus Kucheria. Second place New Jersey State Finals Tournament, second place Gateway Regional Tournament, Ishan Patel. Adwatia Samada, Rohit Jayakumar, Devit Bat, Ranjavay Singh, Dhaksh Jawadi, I'm sorry, Devadi, Vashit Kumara Puraju. Third place New Jersey State Finals Tournament, third place Gateway Regional Tournament, Tejas Kuraboo, Sadarth Sadarsin, Vihan Patel, Daniel Lal, Ibrahim Galadi, Natai Padakula, Santanav Puthar. Second place Gateway Regional Tournament, Darsh Banthal, Sai Nikhil Prudvi, Anurudh Singh, Rudav Senthalaram, Sadarth Vasishis, Krishav Prasad, Shrivalsa Alapali. Fourth place Gateway Regional, Arav Mishra, Ariv Srivastava, Ayush Abahe, Amkar Shetty, Vihan Nadikar, Janish Uma Mehes, and Advide Nair. Congratulations to OM. Next up is our WWMS Math Competition Club with our advisor, Ms. Deborah Jasper. St. Joseph's Mathematics Competition, second place, Rashab Girish. Dhaksh Dwavadi, Ashwath Krishnamurti. St. Joseph's History Bowl, second place, Ananjay Sharma. Fourth place, Pranav Venkataraman. Mount St. Mary's Academy Mathematics Competition, third place, Carolyn Do, Naisha Umesh, Tanvi Kampani. Congratulations, math competition. National History Day, under the advisement of Mrs. Rhodes and Ms. Lasala, we have our New Jersey History Day State Qualifiers. For Performance, Arwin Ekbodi, Vihan Agarwal. For Exhibit, Anjali Chahan, Reika Jane, Vrinda Puchapali, Anika Banthal, Alish Bakhan, Shrimath Nuthaki, Sri Satvik Pusalluri, Dion Sekar, Amrit Cherakot, Kastuba, Tadakadala, Darsh Dodaja, Dave Pinto, Panchalkadam, Harini Marali, Pranav Venkataraman. For the category of Paper, Kashala Partha Sarathi. For our Documentary category, Shriya Singh. And for our Website category, Sahashra Budapatharaju, Nadana, Badacharji, Sarayu, Booth Patarju. And to start our Music Awards, CJMEA Region Two Intermediate Band, under Mr. Sal Fassa and Mr. Sergio Fassa, we have Harstowan, Vihan Kul, Radima La, Alek... Alekya Arkat Vantal, Siryan Shteki, Rahul Ban Kamakar, Ishan Bora, Shloke Borodhu, and Advik Roy. Central New Jersey Mixed Regional Chorus, directed by Ms. Julia Jasnos, Yuthika Theramuralu, Jasiti Pandya, Kanisha Ahmed, Priyanka Trevetti, Rashab Girish, Josiah Flower, Rajah Singh, Hasini Sentel Kumar, Sahasra Tipa, Anakta Tripathy, Yaswita Regan, Shreya Karavati. CJMEA Region Two Intermediate Chamber Orchestra and New Jersey State Intermediate Orchestra, under the direction of Mrs. Maria Ramsey and Mr. Greg Warren, Jacqueline B., Catherine Wu, Kashai Kalaraju. CJMEA Region Two Chamber Orchestra and String Orchestra, Chamber Seyun Kim, Alan Ping. For strings, Rika Jane, Harini Murali, Felicia Zhu. For Model UN, under the advisement of Ms. Shiri Aramini, our best delegate, first place, Rayan Bodhu, Varya Kashanath, Rayan Bodhu, Varya Kashanath, and Rashab Girish. Outstanding Delegate, second place, Panchul Kadham, Laboni Sagupta, Mahir Sehn, Ishan Menon, Srijasa Shah, Shriya, Chevendra, Somiya Velmani. Ashrit Cora, Somiya Velmani, Vinay Rajan, Ananjay Sharma, and Trisha Anand. And winning both, Best Delegate, first place, and Outstanding Delegate, second place, Bargav Chittaretti and Akshaya Santoskumar. And now I'd like to introduce our great Assistant Principal, Mr. Nick Sakino.
All right, let's keep it going. I'm proud and honored to introduce this year's middle school aerial drone national champions. This was a joint team from both John Adams and Woodrow Wilson. We have Rohit Singh, Navan Kumar, Druva Gaviyaja, Krish Keshwani, and Ayann Lakankar. For the Edison Boys Volleyball Tournament Champions, coached by JR Papernik and Trevor Demansky, we have Tanish Anand, Harini Sri Chala Gunla, Vishnu Chedala, Bargav Chittaretti, Rohit Donna Sekar, Magna Imandi, Utam Kalori, Aditya Kanajia, Navan Kumar, Noel Manoj, Mythil Parijapati, Akai Sanchez, Dharmic Sanapeneni, Shloke Sarpadar, Rayan Shah, Advik Singh, Achil Tata, and Rohit Van Ghor. Congratulations, boys. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to my colleague and fellow Vice Principal, Ms. Rainu Menderata.
All right, we're going to keep it going. It is my honor and privilege to introduce FPLA, Future Business Leaders of America. Under the advisement of Ms. Christine Cameron and Ms. Anhar Islam. All the following students qualified for Nationals in LA, California this summer. We leave on Saturday, June 28th, to compete nationally. We will be joining, I will be joining these talented students. Annual Chapter Activities, fourth place Tanish Anam, Chane Upala. For the category of Business Etiquette, first place Anya Surana. Third place Kiara Roy. Fourth place Ashwath Tipa. Now for the category of Career Exploration, first place Pranathie Bandapali. Second place Navya Shri Vashtawa. Fourth place Vivant Pandey. Now for the category of Career Research, first place Vivant Pandey. Third place Vihan Gandhi. For Community Service, first place, again, we have Rayan Bodhu. Critical Thinking, first place Indra Subramanyam. Second place Rutvi Shet. Sumali Singh. Ratzi Ranvadkar. For fourth place Noel Manoj. Now for the category of Digital Citizenship, third place Satvir Vicharin. Fourth place Pranav Venkataraman. Exploring Business Ethics, first place Ayann Patel. Panchul Kadham. Fourth place Anushka Lanj. Kashvi Shet. Megna Imadi. Exploring Business Issues, first place Briyal Amotang, Kiara Roy, Navya Shri Vashtawa. Second place Pranav Venkataraman. Now for Exploring Economics, first place Atharva Jaitliya. Second place Artem Jawariwala. Fourth place Arav Mukadam, Nikisha Sharma. Now for Exploring Leadership, first place Molly Patel. Exploring Parliamentary Procedures, second place Mahavir Kuduri. Third place Noel Manoj. Exploring Public Speaking, third place Sahil Vupula, Yudhikati Rumal. For Exploring Technology, third place Nirmeegrover. Fourth Advit Murli Mohan, Tejas Kuruba, Arav Mishra, and Soham Patel. For Exploring Website Design, first place Neel Bajaj, Dave Pinto, Dharmic Sanapeneni. FPLA Concepts, second place Achil Pentapadi, fourth place Oham Patel. FPLA Mission and Pledge, first place Sahib Singh, second place Molly Patel, third place Vishish Kumara Purugu. Now for Financial Literacy, second place Mythil Prajapati, third place Jashun Rajesh Khanan, and fourth place Neel Bajaj. Interpersonal Communication, fourth place Rupre Khaghosh. Learning Strategies, first place Briyal Amotang, second place Anvita Nayar, and third place Sumali Singh. Video Game Challenge, third place Advit Nayar. And now, moving on to First Place TCS Go IT Youth Innovation, under the advisement of John Peach, we have Sanvi Mishra, Watsam Alakar, and Akai Sanchez. Now for Scripts, National Spelling Bee, Appearing in the Finals, on the TV, fourth place nationally, Harini Murali. Next, recognizing our perfect PSAT 8-9, Wade Junjunwala, and Ananjay Sharma. Now first place and chosen to be published in Celebrating Art Spring 2025 Edition, under the advisement of Brian Romeo and Melissa Molnar, we have Zoya Akhtar, Nandana Bhattacharya, Bhavika Gujala, Esha Maroju, Kavya Mehta, Molly Patel, and Aditya Salvaraj. Now for Great History Challenge, under the advisement of Marissa Lasala. Regional winners and national qualifiers, we have Nagar Shita Chintakuntu, Aniket Pramod, Talal Munam, Arush Sahu, Medan Shbat, Arihant Goyav, Altamesh Hussain, Mahir Joseph, Advik Roy, Ishan Bora, Ananjay Sharma, Noel Manoj, Satvik Palladi, and Shiri Satvik Pulasuri. Give a big round of applause to all the Woodrow students being recognized. At this time, I'm going to call back Mr. Tom White.
Thank you for your patience through the whole process. This is our last and final intermission. We will start again in five minutes. Okay, time to close this one out. Next presenter, we have Dr. Kim from JP Stevens High School.
Hello, everyone. All right, so we're going to start with our athletics awards. Starting with the white division champions for volleyball coached by Mr. Tim Weber. The boys volleyball team, Calle Baretto Figueroa, Roman Zdowski, Chukandave, Akash Gunthumadugu, Nipon Moretti, Mondir Vagur, Ling Li, Ariyan Kara, Arush Gol, Namet Tamak, Kyle Eng, James Lugo, and William Cho. In the All-Red Division All-Conference, we have Amy Han and Sophia Wong. First Team All-White Division, Aleah Manley, Chloe Chan. Second Team All-White Division, Manci Mohanraj. All-White Division, James Lugo, Ariyan Kara, Arush Gol, and Namet Tamak. All-Red Division All-Conference, GMC Scholar-Athlete for Golf, led by Coach Canova, Tanush Patel. Now moving into our Arts Department, the CJMEA Regions Mix Choir, led by Mr. Lee and Ms. McElroy, Simran Arji, Smuthi Arun, Shruya Banthal, Sanvi Chukakar, Riva Dave, Swara Jadav, Merup Kor, Amani Kandakar, Ananya Mahidara, Nikul Malu, Druv, Merchantani, Mahithi Nutu Lapati, Victor Ogunyemi, Aditya Parik, Adrijja Paul, Manoj Singh, Vedika Srinivasan, Arya Tusirakani. The CJMEA Regions Treble Choir, we have Advika Anand, Manat Anand, Anush Kabala, Marcy Dangerville, Trisha Holikari, Swara Joshi, Akira Kilson, Ambika Kumar, Muthika Mudigadi, Megna Ravindran, Akansha Sharma, and Rithika Vedala. The NJMEA All-State Mix Choir, we have Advika Anand, Sharia Banthal, Sanvi Chukakar, Arna Daria, Swara Jadav, Mirup Kor, Nikul Malu, Druv Merchantani, Anaga Nagesh, Adrijja Paul, Sanvi Shah, Rithika Vedala, Arush Venkat Nargan. The NJMEA All-State Treble Choir, we have Smuthi Arun, Riva Dave, Shriya Deshna, Trisha Holikari, Sarah Conchi, Ananya Madikara, and Vedika Srinivasan. The JP Stevens High School All-State Band, led by Mr. Zali, we have Devon Shah, Justin Ni, Juven Amala, Dev Zavari, Sahil Kulkarni, Tazin Afraz, Shreya Thirumali, Siddharth Vaidya, Awate Kulkarni, Nicholas Alcady, Pranav Bhatireo, Taran Vakata, Christopher Wan, Rihanna Shirali, Johan Kristna, Pranav Vedumapali, Reshit Dugimputi, Avanch Rajakal, Ashin Nattparia, Arnav Lanj, Manav Chittaretti, and Shreya Sawal. Just realized I should put my glasses on. All right. Now moving on to some of our extracurriculars, we have FCC LA, led by Ms. Olenczek, Ms. Dwaransky, and Ms. Di Matteo. First place gold, Peer-to-Peer Financial Fitness, Srivali Sud, Anya Shetty, and Nehal Panchangmath. Food Truck Feud, Siyana Deb, Zina Kar. Fashion Construction, Charlize Asif. Hospitality Tourism and Recreation, Janav Singh, Malav Shah, and Sai Shritita Kona. Entrepreneurship, Raj Ganesh Srinivasan, Rajendra Ratula. Nutrition and Wellness, Hasini Yedlapali, Aparne Nair, Harshvita Partha Savathy. Peer-to-Peer Career Connection, Advadi Bed, Kushni Matani. Peer-to-Peer Stand-Up, Dristri Padimapati, Anjali Sinha. The Effective Teacher, Riarana, Anvita Singal, Manasvi Ambeswali. First place gold in Scholarship Interior Design, Jotika Akula and Sia Patel. Second place gold, Interpersonal Communications, Jenna Trotman, Druddy Patel, Sanya Talwar. Third place gold, Interpersonal Communications, Rida Kotenswaran, Emma Desa. Entrepreneurship, Kritika Manwani, Nehad Nirgudi, Shridhar Garg. Yarn Art, Manvita Adipala. International Gold, Neil Patoli, Sudam Koka, Nikhil Belankoda, Trisha Pinikur, Anita Palagiri. Civic Engineer, Pranav Raiakota and Pranav Kodkar. Storybook Ethics, Sai Samyutka, Rendu Chintala, Jia Kohli, Chaitanya Palasumrudin. Toys That Teach, Von Sheekah, Kotamassu, Anya Shah, Gunit Sudan. First place silver, Peer-to-Peer Facts, Hetha Srinivas, Om Singal, and Mihak Patel. Lessons Learned, Rachel Rakara. Silver Promote and Publicize FCC LA, Storybook Ethics, Sai Ashini Ganoju, Shayomiti Mitra. Food Truck Food, Ayansayed, Aman Khan, Kiratjit Singh. Promote and Publicize FCC LA, Kia Patel, Sophia Galam, Sonia Kulkarni. Storybook Ethics, Sai Ashini Ganoju, Shayomiti Mitra. Third place silver, The Effective Teacher, Kirin Jayakumar, Minakshi Ganasin. Bronze, Sri Krishna Varshitakara, Sanvi Batla Penmutari Marti, and Pranika Kul... and Pranika Kaluru. All right, now moving on to Odyssey of the Mind, led by Mr. Parik Parakadim. First-place Gateway Competition, Save Me Structure, Pranav Thota, Madav Karubu, Aditya Dwasari, Abinav Pentiyala, Akram Razak, Vibhav Puchalapali. Astron O'Michael Odyssey, Ashvik Dosi, Vedant Bhagnakar, Arush Gota, Tina Sarawat, Ujali Patel, Ara Vias, Shrey Sudhikar. World Finalists for Odyssey of the Mind 2025, Problem One, Ashikarg, Deeraj Patel, Fed Pant, Kushi Habar, Kavish Gol, Shriya Gupta, Abhirkot Modak. Problem Four, Pranav Thota, Adav Karubu, Abinav Pentiyala, Aditya Dwasari, Akram Razak, Vibhav Puchalapali. Problem Five, Ox Doshi, Vedant Bhagnakar, Arush Gode, Tina Sarawat, Ujali Patel, Ara Vias, Shrey Sudhikar. Winner of Odyssey Angels Competition Odyssey of the Mind 2025, Sanya Coachkar, Ragav Donathredi, Dayakarakat, Sia Gaur, Jenna Trotman, Isabel Alvaran, Smaian Satyavulu. All right, New Jersey National History Day, Regional First Place State Qualifier, led by Ms. Hurowitz and Ms. Redwood. Exhibit on the World War I Black Tom Explosion, Ami Ray, Gunvi Gulati, Sri Manaswasi. Performance on Beneath the Service, The Rights of a Nation and Duty of a Soldier, Niranjana Prakash Kumar, Nivan Montri, Swathi Danasikhar, Varsha Rajesh. Exhibit on RMS Titanic, Navigating Rights and Responsibility at Sea, Dritishri, Badimapati, Sahastra Nisaki, Sri Vidya Pasula. Exhibit on the Americas with Disabilities Act of 1990, A Nation's Duty to Protect, Provide, and Progress, Arya Matri, Ashi Levanea. Exhibit on MKUltra, Falak Zahir, Dia Kamath, Tanisha Sirti, Kuthana Adikarla. Exhibit on Social Darwinism and Its Impact on European Conization in Africa, Advait Kandaswami, Vaian Bari, and Raj Gage. Documentary on the Dark Side of Science, The Tuskegee Study, Mancha Sile. Documentary on the Echoes of Peace, The Legacy of the Good Friday Agreement, Srijani Sinha. Documentary on Watergate and the Press, The Power of Investigative Journalism, Pragna Curra. Documentary on Roe v. Wade, Rights and Responsibilities in Women's History, Vaish Singh. Exhibit on McCarthyism, How a Social Movement Shook the Pillars of American Democracy, Sanjana Pandjar. Exhibit on the Right to Healthcare for Everyone, Act Up and the Responsibilities of Society, Akshana Sharma. Website on Prohibition, Law vs. Liquor, A Battle Between American Rights and Responsibilities, R. F. Kumar. Website on the People's Assembly, Kai School. Performance on MKUltra, Sanvi Dave. All right, New Jersey History State Competition. First-place state competition performance on Beneath the Surface, The Right of a Nation and the Duty of a Soldier on the Cuban Missile Crisis, Niranjana Prakash Kumar, Nivan Montri, Swathi Danasikhar, Varash Rajesh. Third-place state competition documentary on the Dark Side of Science, The Tuskegee Study and Risk of Bioethics, Mancha Sile. Special Award from the Friendly Sons of Shillaglag Essex County, Echoes of Peace, The Legacy of the Good Friday Agreement, Srijani Sinha. The Red Division Middlesex County Conference Champions, Girls Gold, led by Coach Sider for Golf, Prisha Amin, Ishani Vikal, Meghana Arun, Ria Lakilhal, Alexa Choi, Anika Sawant. Girls Golf First Team All-Conference, Ishani Vikal, Vakil, Alexa Choi. Choreography Dance Ensemble, Middlesex County Teen Arts Festival State Level, led by Ms. Stein, Josh Mitha Sappa, Apsona Banerjee, Veera Ragavan. Nominated to the 2025 New Jersey State Teen Arts Festival, Lea Ma. All-State Orchestra, led by Mr. Verdi and Mr. Lee, Leylanie Gopel, Paige Wong, Yaswant Balagusurmat Sarmi, Pranav Murthy, Nehat Thota, Ahana Shah. The JPS Girls Basketball Team, All-White Division, led by Coach Weber, Aleah Manley, Chloe Chan. JPS Boys Basketball Team, All-Blue Division, led by Coach Sardone, Karim Ozdemir. The Girls Swimming Team, All-Conference, led by Coach Peguera, Angela Jo. All-Red Division, Angela Cho, Trisha Ojha. JPS All-Conference Boys Swimming Team, All-Conference, Sean Stanek, Leo Maisel. Boys Swimming Team, All-Red Division, Sean Stanek, Leo Maisel, Anthony Chu. Boys Bowling Team, All-White Division, led by Coach Canova, Charlie Hyman Cruz. Girls Winner Track Team, All-Conference, All-Red Division, led by Coach Ravito, Tanvi Anam Raju. Boys Winner Track Team, All-Red Division, Neil Bosel. Girls Softball, All-White Division, led by Coach Ratty, Olivia Rosigliano. Girls Track, All-Blue Division, led by Coach Ravito, Megan Gustav, Casey Wong, Tanvi Anam Raju, Jada Corbett. Boys Winner Track, All-Blue Division, led by Coach Riggy, Advat Jayadas, Neil Bosel, Arjun Verakinar, Vaish Singh, Shayan Nadan Raj, Ishan Bandar. Boys Lacrosse, All-White Division, led by Coach Lee, Mufasa, Kalwaja, and Sean Weeks. Boys Baseball, All-Blue Division, led by Coach Jackal, Sohem Prajapati, Makun Rao. Girls Lacrosse, All-White Division, led by Coach Siroka, Kristen Whitney, Cameron Bolinsky. National Merit Scholar Winner, we have Erju Saha, Mahi Mahichya, Meher Tade Parti. Governor's School Finalists for the School of Engineering and Technology, Arun Akala. School of the Sciences, Manav Chittareti. In DECA, First Place Apparel and Accessories Marketing Series, Samaya Vakam. Business Law Ethics, Team Decision-Making, Arnav Sidamsedewar, Anirudh Ragnesh. Business Services Marketing Series, Adrian Chernoga. Entrepreneurship Team Decision-Making Event, Bill Tang, sorry, Siva Prakashani Virasiku. Financial Consulting Event, Aditya Herakar. First place Financial Service Team Decision-Making, Rithvik Cola, Ibrahim Sheikh. Human Resources Management Series, Dia Siva Subramani. Marketing Communications, Anya Maria. Principles of Finance, Dylan Petania. Quick Serve Restaurant Management Series, Arnav Trapathy. Buying and Merchandising Operations Research Event, Anya Maria, Satvik Malik, Tina Sarawat. International Business Plan, Adrian Chernoga, Manushri Conchi, Shannon Zhang. Quick Serve Restaurant Management Series, Tina Sarawat. ICDC Finalist. Business Law and Ethics Team Decision-Making, Anirudh Ragnesh, Arnav Sidamsedewar. Principles of Finance, Gunvi Gulati. Entrepreneurship Franchise Business Plan, Arush Gouda, Gladestias de la Rosa, Donvi Parik. And finally, our second-place World Finalist Financial Services Team Decision-Making, Rithvik Cola and Ibrahim Sheikh. Let's give them all a big round of applause. All right, it's my pleasure to find out what's great about Edison High. I'd like to introduce Mr. Charles Ross.
Good morning, everybody. I'm sorry, good evening. How are we everybody doing here today? You know, I always say what's great about Edison High, but what's really great about the Edison Township School District is just the wide amount of success that takes place in all of our different schools. So all of the previous principals, of course, the parents, and our young students, who are the ones that do the work to gain all of these accolades should be rewarded. So I appreciate that very much. Now to turn two, saving the best for last, the home of the Eagles, Edison High. Want to start off by shouting out our undefeated in the division, white division girls golf champion under former PGA pro Frank Giuliano. We had Caitlin Hahn, Disha Dilip Joshi, Gary Kachetri, Irene Cho, Nidia Condura, Nidhi Maholker, Ashi Tamboli, and Twisha Patel. And leading the way was our own Caitlin Hahn, who had 25 birdies this year, and even got a hole-in-one on number seven at Raritan Landing. All-White Division, All-Conference Golf. Also All-White Division Golf were Gary Kachetri, Disha Dilip Joshi, and Irene Cho. Fantastic season putting the banner up in our gym. Moving on to Volleyball, Ajit Ikanjum, Pranav Siva Kumar, under Coach Jason Wernland, was All-White Division, All-Conference Golf. Also All-White Division with the school record for sets was Gavin Garcia in Boys Volleyball. All-White Division, All-Conference Girls Lacrosse was Jada Leon. All-White Division was Ashley Smith and Chelsea Avila, under Coach Sarah Yokum. First-team All-Blue Division under Basketball, Charlie Moore, with Diedrich Harvey and Deras Amparo Yena. Diedrich was like number four in steals in the state at one time. All right, and now the Edison Men's Bowling Team. The one person that couldn't leave from the bowling team is our own Derek Dudak. They were white division champions. Yes, stand up. Tracy Smith and James Napoli, John Ray, James Stavernick. He's in here too. Joel Rodriguez, Shazif Khan, Dylan Labrizzi, Steven Labrizzi, Thomas Trobliger, and Jason Hill, white division champions. All-White Divisions, Stay Standing, James Stavernick, John Ray, Joel Rodriguez, Mr. President Derek Dudak, and Sarah Nazrullah. All right, moving on. If it's this time of year and we're talking about state champions, we must be talking about the six-time, back-to-back-to-back-to-back-to-back-to-back-to-back. Game Day varsity cheerleaders, under Coach Nicole Gregoire and Sarah Yokum. So we got two different ones. We won in game day, and then we won varsity cheerleading. So we'll knock those out real quick. Our cheerleading winners were Leila Dixon, Tiara Campbell, Kylie Ewing, Mackenzie Einhorn, Demiah Carter, Juliana Galtez, Aya Torres, Kelsey Rizzo, Kalen Klein, Lindsay Yasko, Gianna Rafino, Olivia Short, Melody Lewis, and Jalissa Muscara. Also for the varsity cheerleading was, in the intermediate, small intermediate state champs. Yeah, we won two state champions, I'm sorry. All right, let's give it up. Won't be the last one tonight. Also, let's give it up for Leila Dixon, Tiara Campbell, Kylie Ewing again, Gia Williams, Kalen Khan, Ms. Yasko, Gianna Rafino, Ms. Short, Desiree Green, Melody Lewis, April Godoy, Sinalee Parker-Lax, and Adriana Ignazi. All right, moving right along. All-White Division, All-Conference, under Coach Mike Yasko. Boys Lacrosse, Colin Predaddy. All-White Division was Brayden Greer, Justin Duggan, and Alexis Gonzalez. Now our softball team, thanks, who are getting ready. We started working on a new turf field out there, and they had a turnaround season, really went far. Were winning so many different games. All-Blue Division for girls softball, we have Kalen Klein, Jenna Fugate, and Kaylee Dibisagli. Two ones there, are fantastic freshmen. I guarantee you, we're going to be getting into the states deeper and deeper. And we made a run into the state tournament for the first time in a long time. So great job, girls, great job, Coach Muldowney. All right, in baseball, now the boys baseball team, under Coach Abene, who won his 300th game this year. They got two outs away from winning the counties against St. Joe's, and they got almost, and they were down in the bottom of the eighth to get out in the semifinals of the state sectional. So they had a great season under Connor Murphy, who got All-Conference and All-Red Division. And All-Red Division was Robert Roma Jr. and Dom Mucho Inocente. Great season, and they're all coming back again. And now, boys track, here's some more of the champions. We had a meat of champions, meaning he was the best javelin thrower in the entire state of New Jersey, that was Mr. Landon Cruz. Not one person in the state threw further than Landon. It's only his second year throwing the javelin. He was All-Red Division, and a Group Four champion we also had was Mr. David Brown in the high jump, jumped six foot 10. Also All-Red Division on the boys track was Joe Piñero, Bryce Hickerson, and Fabrizio Soto. Yay! We'll stay with sports. Some of the guys on the wrestling team turned 17, had to go get their driver's license while they were waiting here. So they had to go, but they had a fantastic season. Another group that turned around, we're going to start off with our GMC Freshman of the Year. The GMC All-Conference Second Team for Wrestling was Nick Campanelli. And now GMC All-Conference First Team, and the outstanding wrestler, again in the lower weights, was our own Fernando Smiley Avalon, from the legendary Avalon Wrestling Family. And if you need to get your hair blessed, go see Nico Cuts. All right, now GMC All-Conference Third Team, we have Candy Northern and Jeremy Negron. Great job, everybody. Going to stay on sports, real quick, we had the all-time leading rebounder, Olivia Smart for Edison High School history. She had over 800 career rebounds. She was first-team All-White Division Girls Basketball, under Coach Frank Eckert. All right, now, under Mark Dinacola, the NJMEA All-State Symphonic Band, Albert Badagladi and Juan JJ Mora Herrera. National Merit Special Scholarships, Nirmid K. Boyar and Logan Schreutz. For DECA Nationals in Conference Hospitality and Tourism, seventh place was Sia Butasia. The Edison High FCCLA also took away some great honors. Edison is a township, from Hoover to JP to us, really do a good job in the state and national conferences. In first-place gold rewards, I won't go into what it is, but first-place gold, we had Aditya Patel, An Patel, Kishav Patel, Pragya Batya, Ashi Tamboli, Kea Patel, Kalen Savadra Lopez, Ira Krishnan, Yavi Mangrola, Vaishnavaibhat, Arpita Singh, Gary Gerthar, Tanish Kantpal, Akshat Dubey, Nishal Taligula, Rudra Patel, and Harim Sohel. Further golds went to Stuti Shah, Syrah Mohid, Shri Abaumik, Jia Desai, Jamvi Patel, Nalini Parek, Dua Majid, Ria Patak, Avatika Stingiri, Rachel Ho, Lea Yap, Shrevanti Isusindran, Rithik Gera, Mihak Patel, and Mahika Date. And first-place silver for hospitality tourism and recreation was Ishan Javari, Yashavali Kompela, and Kavan Malavia. And I would be remiss if I didn't, it came out a little bit late, so I'm just going to go off-book here for a minute. Want to finish up with a Want to finish up with a group of people, just checking my list, make sure. We've got so many winners, got to check out that we got everybody here. But I want to shout out, we had a, they've talked about this before, but the Lemusin MIT Grant winners. And some of our students, some of them in the STEM Academy, some of in the regular, the regular honors classes. Anthony Bayo, Ishani Bakshi, Divya Krishna, Mythel Mishra, Aditya Rao, Zeishan Tacham Sheikh, and Vedant Taladi recently showcased their innovative work at MIT. Now, we saw about 10 schools in Edison how great it is, but in the entire country, only eight schools were selected to go to MIT and present. The presenter said and agreed unanimously that we had the absolute best presentation, and it had to do with something straight at home, how to make the Raritan River cleaner. So I wanted to give a big shout out to the STEM Academy, all of those young people, and Mr. Soys, and MIT for being nice enough to host that. And without further ado, I'll turn it back over to Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. This concludes our recognition night ceremony. Congratulations to all of our students being recognized this evening. One more final round of applause for everyone being recognized. And now I would like to return the meeting to our Board of Education President, Mr. Jerry Shi, to begin tonight's business. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to everyone who were recognized today. So we're going to take a five-minute break, and we'll go on to our regular business. Thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to resume our meeting. So first up, we're open for public comments for resolutions only. Public comments for resolutions only. See none, can I have a motion to end public comments?
Motion, I second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve personnel?
Motion, I second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Ronak Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Anjana Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Romano?
Yeah.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes. I just wanted to say congratulations to Mr. Sean Brown. He's sitting right there. Our new supervisor, you want to say a couple words? Feel free.
Dr. Alderelli, Board of Ed, President Shi, I just wanted to thank you for this opportunity. As a proud Edison Public School resident myself, I am so humbled and honored to accept this position. I look forward to working with parents, families, staff, and administration to advocate and support our special education community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you for the family members who come here to witness this moment. Thank you very much, really appreciate it. Your support, you know, means a lot, you know, to Sean and to our school district. He graduated same year as my son, class 2012. So local product all the way, all right? Thank you very much. All right, now I have a motion to approve Administration Curriculum Instruction, Pupil Special Services. Can I have a motion for that?
Motion, I second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Ronak Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Anjana Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Romano?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now can I have a motion to approve Finance?
Motion, I second.
Mr. Ronak Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Anjana Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Romano?
No.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, now Committee Reports, Finance and Facility Committee.
I'm sorry, I don't have a paper with me, but I'm going to just go by my heart, because I remember it just happened, the meeting just happened a couple of days back about the finance and facility. We reviewed the GMI bid, as Mr. Shi announced in the last meeting, we got lot lower bid than we budgeted, so it will allow us to do more with the money that we budgeted. Second thing was, we discussed the AC, you know, putting the AC at the GMI, GMP, and Washington Elementary School. Again, the architects are working on a plan to design the air conditioning in those schools, and we'll try to execute it this year or later next year. Anything I'm missing, Mr. Shi?
Yeah, that's pretty much high level, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Now we're open for public comments. So anyone who has any public comments, yes, the students, you guys can come first. Or students in the audience, you guys can come first.
Good evening, members of the Edison Township Board of Education. My name is Xavier Chung, and I'm a current sophomore here at Edison High School. Starting now and continuing through next school year, I will be serving as the Junior President of the Choir Student Leaders Board under the direction of Mr. Listener. I've taken on this role because it has been made clear to me that here at EHS, we are more than just a choir, we are a caring and tight-knit community. Right now, we have a rising concern over an Assistant Choir Director not being hired for next year. In response to this, I, along with my classmates and friends, Umar Fatakh and Chris Cunningham, wrote and published a petition that I have emailed to Dr. Alderelli. And as of right now, this petition has reached 120-plus signatures from students, parents, and friends alike. Tonight, a group of the Choir Department students and my personal peers have come to support our efforts in hopes that you all may take in, take the addition of an Assistant Director into consideration. A few of these students will be coming up after me to provide more information on this topic. The first point that I would like to make, though, is that since Mr. Listener started teaching here four years ago, the choir program has nearly tripled in size. Next school year, the program will grow to 180-plus members. That is an overwhelming number of students for one person to manage. At the start of the 2024 to 2025 school year, I joined the Choir's Production Board and have assisted in the logistics of big events such as concerts and trips. I've seen firsthand the amount of effort that goes into running this program and how difficult it can be to manage 100-plus people. In my two years of being in this community, Mr. Listener has been nothing but a caring and loving teacher and mentor to so many of us, so now we are here to give back to him for the all that he has given to us. Now, on the topic of recognition, I would like to acknowledge the amount of achievements our choir department has made this year alone. Toward the start of the year, we performed at the Westminster Choir College and worked with the amazing, talented Dr. Nally. In February, we performed one of our most interactive Broadway nights with a whole new layout compared to previous years. In March, we performed in the prestigious Carnegie Hall under the direction of Dr. Heather J. Buchanan. And later in March, we competed in Orlando Fest down in Orlando, Florida, on our trip to Universal, and swept the competition with superior in every category. All of this is possible with the help from Mr. Listener and our student director, Ms. Vodri. Without Ms. Vodri's help, it would have been a lot, a lot more difficult to manage all of these students and all of these trips. And if we can get another Assistant Director next year, that would help a lot with how many possibilities we can achieve with 180-plus members. All I ask is that you hear what we have to say, and that you may decide to reconsider the denial of an Assistant Director. Even the addition of an Assistant Director for half of the school year would be a monumental help. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. I just want to start off by thanking everyone else, everyone else from the town who's here tonight, and all of my peers for coming out here. And I want to express even more gratitude for the board, for everything you do for all of us, the students. My name is John Michael Solano. I am a junior, and I am a proud and esteemed member of Edison High School Choir's program. This upcoming year will be my second year in its top chamber choir, and I'll be serving two positions on the student board. I and the rest of my peers have all taken initiative to come here to tank, to address the concerns that we may not have an Assistant Director for the '25 and '26 school year. We believe that this is imperative with there being 180 students enrolled in classes alone, with the number of students shooting up more to 200 when factoring in students that partake in after-school ensembles. That is 200 students having to be taught by one teacher, Mr. Listener. Almost 200 people having to be transported to various field trips and out-of-state events with only one teacher. That is not factoring in the fact that the sheer amount of hours that our teacher puts into guiding and mentoring all the students, he has already. And also, it is important to know that he knows every single one of our names in the choir. Not just the people that are in the top choir, not just the people that are in classes, everyone that showed up this year. And he learned some of the people who will be here next year. But despite his dedication, that is not the job for one person. So it is with great humility and respect, which I and my peers ask you to please reconsider your decisions on hiring an assistant for the, to ensure the safety and success of the student and faculty. Also, to update on our petition, it is now at 135 signatures. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. My name is Prisha Neer, and I'm a graduating student at EHS this year. I'm here tonight to speak as a four-year member of the EHS Choir. A student's high school experience is a journey of self-discovery, education, and growth. I like to think that the 180 days in a school year is a multi-day journey. 180 days is a minimum duration for a one-way trip from Earth to Mars if the planets are in favorable alignment. However, none of this is possible without the leadership of our captains, our teachers. And I speak for all of us when I say, none have truly facilitated our success like Mr. Listener, not just as our teacher, but as a director. Mr. Listener has been nothing short of an excellent spearhead for our program. We have swept three competitions in three years, have worked with Grammy-winning conductors, and have even performed on the world-renowned stage at Carnegie Hall. Over the past three years, we have grown exponentially. This year itself, we have had 120 students in the entire choir program. Next year, we will grow to 180 total students in the choir program. While this achievement is great news for the choir program, it also brings some dilemmas. Mr. Listener has been steering them, this ship by himself for almost four years now. As the choir continues to grow, it becomes very apparent that leading over 100 students in the program can become very taxing on a single leader, even with help from the student or parent boards. Mr. Listener is in charge of choosing music, teaching music, running rehearsals, organizing travel for competitions, running after-school rehearsals, and most of all, caring for his students, which he has been excellent at. As the choir program grows, we think it is time to request for a co-pilot for our program. In almost every classroom, there is one teacher and 20 to 30 students, which you can imagine that it may be already painful for teachers to do, deal with that itself. In our entry-level class next year, we have about 90 entering students. Quite frankly, a one-teacher-to-90-student ratio is astronomical. With that being said, we believe Mr. Listener deserves a co-pilot for the program. While Mr. Listener has been excellent at directing us, he has brought in so much growth to our program to the point that we believe it is time for an Assistant Teacher to come in. One teacher cannot teach 90 students at once, let alone conduct rehearsals once, by oneself, with 180 students in front of you. Without an Assistant Director, we will have to cut out things that make our choir so great, which would be a shame and hushes the voices from within our community. Trips such as Carnegie Hall that bolster our reputation. Minor performances such as Broadway Night and Pasta in Performance, where the community gets to come together for a fun-filled night. Without an Assistant Teacher, we would have to take measures even as far to hinder our appearance at competitions. Our choir is one part of what's great at Edison High, and we believe that we should be able to continue with doing the things that make our choir, our choir. An Assistant Director at this point in time is crucial to our success and development as a team. And I believe we need one now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Greetings, esteemed members of the Edison Township Board of Education. My name is Brandon Chung, and I am a graduating senior of the class of 2025, who has been a part of Edison High School's choir for the last four years, as well as one of its active student leaders. I've been here since Mr. Listener started teaching back in 2021, and I'll admit, we didn't have a large student body. Right now, we have about 100 students enrolled in choir, and next year, it will be even more. Mr. Listener has always been a passionate and dedicated teacher, but I've noticed his quality of work significantly improves when he has a student teacher at his side. This is a fact, because this year, we have participated in the most amount of musically enriching experiences of all four years that I have been in the choir program. I believe this is because we had a student teacher to share this workload. Imagine what we could do with a full-time Assistant Director. We could continue to participate in the same musical experiences that have defined my last year in choir. It would be, and it would be a shame if we had to lower our consistent, consistent quality, because we couldn't get an extra hand. As a senior, I know this won't directly affect me next year, but it will affect the students who stand behind me, both literally and figuratively, and the students who are going to join our family. All I am asking is that you try to understand how important the growth of this program is to all of us, and that gaining an Assistant Director now could open doors for us we couldn't believe imaginable, and greatly increase the reputation of our school that we are proud of. But most importantly, it can decrease the stress of one man who's just trying his best to give his students what they deserve. Life skills, a fantastic musical experience, and something to be passionate about. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Oyendemoleany. I'm a rising senior at Edison High School, where I'm the current Student Board President of the Edison High School Choir Program. I'm here tonight to counter the response to an issue that is deeply affecting both the current and future strength of our music program. And that is the urgent need for a second choir director. I've previously expressed my fears via an email to Superintendent Dr. Alderelli, which I'm sure he has taken into deep consideration. Right now, one teacher is responsible for teaching five different ensembles, running after-school rehearsals, performances, auditions, prepping us for concerts, festivals, and all other concerts, all while handling the same teaching responsibilities as any other academic educator. This workload is not only overwhelming, it is grossly unsustainable. To prepare us for one, yes, one concert, it takes an approximate 103.25 hours. This does not include all our other concerts, events, and the tedious tasks it takes to run our program. These hours, which most of us cannot even begin to fathom, can result in not just burnout for our wonderful director, but diminished opportunities for our students. Choir is not just a hobby or an elective for many of us, it is a deeply formative preparatory experience. Some of us plan to major or even minor in music. We represent Edison at regional and national levels every year. We perform at community events such as Board of Ed meetings, collaborate with other schools, and bring pride to our district every single day. When one director is being pulled in every direction, it limits our ability to grow as musicians and as leaders. By reevaluating the decision to hire a second choir director, you're not just lightening the load for one teacher, you're investing in, you're investing in the students you do your jobs for. You are creating more access to a strong music education. You are making room for smaller ensembles, advanced repertoire, individualized instruction and student leadership, and you are giving to Edison's arts programs the respect and structure they deserve. We should be striving to add to the reasons why New Jersey is number one in education, not taking away from them. I'm acutely aware of the budget concerns and competing priorities in our district, and if there is no room in said budget for an additional director, it is with the utmost respect when I say it is essential that you find it. If Edison can support multiple coaches for athletic teams, three directors for our band program, two for the JP Stevens Choir, and two for the JP Stevens Orchestra, is a grotesque slight that we do not provide the adequate staff for the hundreds of students who rely on the arts at Edison High School for their growth, identity, and future. On the behalf of the program that I love and am so proud to represent every single day, I urge you to take this seriously. Our program has continuously helped students to find their voices, including myself. That being said, I ask you all to find space within next year's budget for a second That being said, I ask you all to find space within next year's budget for a second choir director. Our program and our voices depend on it. Thank you so much for your time, and have a lovely night.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else about this issue? Okay, see none. So I have Dr. Alderreli address your comments. But before he says anything, so thank you guys for coming to advocate for the program and for your director. But let's put it on record, there's no issue with budget. I don't know where this, you heard that the budget is issue, it's not an issue. So, but I'll let Dr. Alderreli address some of your concerns.
So I think for our Board of Education members, this is advocacy and student voice in action, right? Something that they feel passionate and very strongly about in relationship to a program that they are so involved with, and the ability to come out here and speak very eloquently in relationship to that. So I applaud your efforts. I do have a couple emails right now. I think I responded to one, and I got one that I just looked at that's in the hopper, so I will respond to that as well. Yeah, so this is a part of a broader conversation in relationship to growing programs, right? Not only for the choir, but for our academies. All of those positions require additional staffing. You know, it's kind of the first time that it's really coming to our attention in relationship to this. I do take this very seriously, and after further examination, if we determine that there's a need for this, it's something that we'll investigate, right? Fair enough? Thanks, gang. Great job.
Thank you, guys, for coming over, and this is the first time I hear the issue. So we're gonna talk with the supervisors and the principal. We're looking to whether we can hire one or not, but the budget is definitely not the issue. All right? Thank you very much.
And you got a really good principal that listens to all of, all of your concerns, too. So that's, that's something that you really should be proud of as well.
All right. So any, anybody with any other issues, public comments, besides this band assistant director? See none? Oh, okay.
Hi, Harish Thatineni, Forty-Five McKinley Street. I'm not sure if this topic was already covered by anyone from the public or from the board members. This is about the concrete pathway along the gym around Jams. Okay, so it looks like Rakesh is also not here, so I will cover that on behalf of him. So first and foremost, yeah, thanks a lot, Jerry. Two years back, you spearheaded that project about the gravel path from Fairmount Avenue to the Jams frontside parking lot. That's very helpful for, I believe, maybe a hundred families. And it helps us keep the cars off of New Dover, the front side of Jams, which is always a congested road in the morning times. So Rakesh is a parent of a student at Jams, and he went and looked around, and as we all know, the ground is sloping towards that gravel path in all directions. So during wintertime or during, even during a slight rains, it's not walkable. So there is a solution, and a cost-effective one. Instead of putting concrete along the gravel path, which I believe may not even be possible because it is, it comes under the wetlands. So the new Jams gym, if we extend the concrete path on the south side and the west side, so that you have a concrete pathway all around the gym building, it would be of tremendous help to the students coming from the Fairmounts Avenue side. And there might be some leveling of ground needed, but it's much more cost-effective than putting concrete along the gravel path. So if Facilities Director could please look into this, that would be great. At least, let's evaluate if it's doable or not, how much the cost is coming to and all that. So that was one thing. Second thing, this is a rather sensitive one, and I will try to choose my words very carefully, but the truth is always bitter, as they say. And fortunately, I'm not running for elections or looking for selected positions, so I'm, I'll probably be the one to bell the cat. We all respect diversity in Edison, no doubt about that. Ours is a diverse town, and that's why we have so many religious holidays or community-specific holidays. And the calendar obviously has always been a pain point, and Dr. Alderreli has been trying to balance it every year, I know, to satisfy all the communities. So there was this discussion on social media, and we compared the Woodbridge calendar. Surprisingly, they don't have any religious holidays. Christmas is covered under the winter break, year-end break, whatever you want to call it, holiday break, when nobody wants to work, irrespective of what religion they follow. And for Good Friday, they have half a day. I know we have like about half a dozen holidays for different communities. So I'm not saying jump from one extreme to another extreme next year. We don't have to follow Woodbridge. We have our own values, and we respect them, and we honor all the communities. But we have to be fair also at the same time. It's not, it doesn't look correct, unless and until it's federal or state-mandated, that some communities have three holidays or two holidays, and other communities have one holiday. I can understand if the staff and the teachers and the administration belong to one particular community, then obviously, if they are not there, how will the school run? I mean, that's common sense. But I'm talking about minority communities. So as I said, it is a very sensitive thing, and I will be the most hated guy on the social media tonight, so, and maybe tomorrow also. But as I said, we need to have frank discussions about these things. As former President Barack Obama said, I mean, why do you guys run away from discussing about race? I mean, discuss it openly. Be respectful of each other and discuss it. So that's what I'm trying to do here. So maybe next year, we need to reconsider this. And I know one month back, or maybe three months back, yeah, I talked about like moving the spring break a week later, just like Woodbridge does, so that majority of the kids and their parents can enjoy going to Florida or whatever, and the tickets are not that expensive. But if you have it in that week, when most of the schools have, it's not worth much. Again, as I said, we don't need to copy Woodbridge, but we definitely need to be fair to all communities. And we need to use common sense and logic as opposed to like being afraid of race, religion, and community, and trying to avoid that topic all the, all the time. And when we abolished policy five-seven-five-six, that was a bold step. And there are, we heard all the discussions, plus and minus to that. And finally, we did do what we thought was right, using common sense and logic. So why are we shying away from this particular topic? This year, whatever is done is done. Once it is out, it's out. It's, I wouldn't say it's written in stone, but it is done. So, but next year, at least, we need to do something about that. Thank you.
Thank you. So just the comments of John Adams. I actually went over there this, this morning to look at the, the area. As I said, that we're not gonna put a concrete pass where the crushed stone is because it's wetland. So I did see there is a possibility with something would connect to the, the side of the, the building. And also, if you look at the path, that there is a path connecting to door one-twenty-one in, in a building. So there's possibility we can open that up, or there's something that we can talk to our facility, you know, director to see what, what we can do. But, or at least, we can do, we can put some crushed stone to the pass right now because some of the areas of stone has been pushed away by the water. So I was there this morning, so I know exactly what you're talking about. As far as the holidays, we're gonna look into it. So, okay, so anybody else? Yes, Anita.
Hello, Anita. Edison Glen. It's a very short one. Today's theme is appreciation, and I wanted to give a drumroll to all of you. When you see the product of success of our kids in the school, your policy, your oversight, your support and encouragement is highly appreciated. And it's the foundation of our kids' success. So thank you, each one of you, for serving our great town. Case in point, as Mr. Ross said. Edison High School students won a prestigious grant from MIT called the Lemanson for showcasing their research on issues that conduct, that impact our community. They had to go to Boston, to the MIT campus. They didn't have funds. They started fundraising. The parents and kids reached out to the school board members and the school administration to help to raise funds, and they all rose up to the occasion. Thank you for supporting and for helping us in our fundraising event for the kids. I also want to let you know that it is just not the funds, but it puts the Edison School District on a prestigious map when you help the kids in all these events. So that is the greatest ripple effect of your support. We look forward to many more support for our student success, including, thank you for the excellent advocacy for the EHS choir board. I was one of the choir board members long back, and they have outstanding success as well. We look forward to many more support from all of you. Good luck to the high school batch of 2025. Thank you, Principal Ross, for your dedication and for making our eagles soar. And thank you again for each one of you for serving our town. It's a noble cause. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments? See none? Oh, oh, you're sorry, Joyce, sorry. I didn't see you, sorry.
You want me to go crazy? All right. Joyce Ship Freeman. I would like to applaud the students who all came up and spoke so sincerely about their choir and how they needed another person, how dedicated they were. And, you know, I also always loved the energy of Mr. Ross, even if we go with different schools, but I still love his energy because he had that energy so much that our students get a lot from that energy. And I also like to congratulate everyone that received an award tonight. And I would like to thank the teachers, the coaches, and the parents because a lot of people don't know, if you're a coach or you're a teacher, they can never pay you enough if you're dedicated to your job because you spend over the amount of time with your students, making sure they get there. And that's what I, I love about Edison, and that's what I always love about it because they do their proper job they're supposed to do with students, and they put in the time that they should. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? See none? Can I have a motion to close public comments? Motion?
I select.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right. All right, so board member comments. Anyone have any comments from the school board members?
Mr. Shi?
Yes, go ahead.
Well, I wanna give a, you know, huge shout-out to all the students who came and raised a concern. It takes, you know, purpose, passion, and knowledge, and a courage to bring up to the, come to the board and present your concern. And, and all of you are very professional. You know, you, you gave us a constructive feedback. You are respectful in your tone, and you stayed focused on the issue. So, you know, kudos to you guys. Keep following your passion and keep raising concerns in future as well. And I also wanna give a shout-out to Mr. Ross for creating a culture where your students are raising, raising issue in front of you in your school. So it, it's a great, it's a great culture that he has created that allows you to safely, you know, bring up the concern that you had. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Jenny.
I would just like to congratulate all of the students that were recognized this evening and staff that, you know, brought them to this place tonight. It's, you know, as a board member, it's really inspiring to see all of them. And these people here are incredible, and I'm so glad you all came tonight, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board member comments?
Mr. Shi, yeah. I, I also want to thank the students coming here today to speak up for your community, your, your choir group. It, it's take courage to speak here, and I admire that. I appreciate that. As the Chair of the Curriculum Committee, it is, it is the first time I'm here in this. I'm sure that's the same for the other board members, and I guarantee you guys that we are going to look into this. We're gonna discuss this with admissions teams, supervisors, principals, and we will get back to you guys. Thank you. Also, I want to congratulate all the students being recognized today. Congrats to their parents, the coaches, the advisors. I think it's a success to all of them. And also, it's kind of an award to the board members, too. I think it's, you know, in addition to our, you know, big check with a big zero on it. It's also, I want to say thank you for making us feel proud of you. You know, it's a great night. Thank you. And also, if, you know, as with my daughter, and we're, we can't wait for the summer to start. So if I don't see you guys again, enjoy the summer break. See you next year.
Thank you. Any other board member comments?
Jerry?
Yes.
A couple things. On Friday, I was in attending next door at the, the preschool over here. I watched the graduating class of two thousand and thirty-eight. Man, that's weird. But these students with caps and gowns, and it was amazing. It just, it was amazing. I wanna thank the parents for coming out and all the teachers that worked with these students. We seen, what we seen tonight was students that, they, they take academics, you know, and, I see what they do and see their progress, and I'm just wondering what the progress is gonna be for the graduating class of two thousand and thirty-eight. I have other issues, and I'm not sure this is the time, but if you want, you could stop me. We have a, we have a police officer. That officer is represented by Local Seventy-Five. We have also firemen and women. They're represented by eleven-seventy-nine, I think, eleven-ninety-seven. We have school bus drivers that are represented by a union. We have teachers that are represented by the ETEA. We have custodians that are represented by another group of people. And at the end of the day, they work together in collaboration to make everything work. I did not go across the river and lend my support to the nurses at Robert Woods. But I am giving my support to my teachers, my supervisors, my principals. When it comes to construction, I'll give you this. We had a problem over at Lincoln School. We had a problem over at Lincoln School. Some of the gymnasium, the wall paneling has to be redone or fixed. That was done without a PLA, Project Leg, Project Labor Agreement. I am in support of making our schools bigger because our students actually deserve that. I mean, I've seen what our students can do, and I can't wait for 2038 to see what they can do. But we're going to take and do something. Let's really think about it. Let's think about putting together, like, we don't need another problem like at Lincoln. We don't need another problem like we have at other facilities. So, when we talk or when I vote, I will not be supporting this because that is not there. I hope that our Board Members understand that. I hope that the public understands that. We are a community. In this room, our teachers, our staff, they deserve that. They deserve, they deserve what we do. We give them the opportunity to join a union. Like the firemen, when you pick up the phone and you dial 911, they come, like our teachers. When you dial 911, the police officers come, just like our custodians, like our teachers, our supervisors. And it's all because of the students that we have, had we had here now, just left. You could see when we work together, you could see that the sky's the limit. I mean, all I ask, all I, that's all I'm going to ask for is a Project Labor Agreement. And I will support all of the construction. But when we had this auditorium filled, we didn't add on to it. We had the opportunity, when we had to dismantle the stage at another facility, we had the opportunity to move it back further. Because not for nothing, when you have over 2,000, over 2,500 students, and when you put a bathroom in and it only has facilities of four, that's right, people, the money that we spend, and we only have enough room for four stalls, some of our students are told in certain facilities, you only have seven minutes. Well, the fact of the matter is, is, I don't know about you, but if you've gone from one side of the school to the other in the crowd that we have, and you just have nothing, you go, you go into the bathroom and you're waiting in line in the bathroom, you're waiting in line outside. Progressive thinking. So, I want everybody to know I will not support the JMI addition unless I get a Project, Product Labor Agreement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just for the record, a lot of the construction we have done, all the gyms in the middle school, this one, the remodel of this one, JP Stevens, and, you know, the other remodeling the middle schools, we pay prevailing wages. And for the record, the JP Stevens expansion, the people who work on there are all union members. So, we pay, we pay prevailing wages, that's a public's work. We pay prevailing wages.
Well, the Jar, the giant rat that was in front of JP Stevens, the coffin that was over in front of Lincoln School, all I have to say is thank you for paying prevailing wage. But it wouldn't take anything to take and to put something pen to pencil, pen to paper, to take and to say this. Yeah, prevailing wage. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Board Members, any other comments?
All right, Sinon. So, I went to the JP Stevens Auditorium with Mrs. White the other day. They had the, the concert for the semi-opening of the auditorium. The auditorium is not done yet, in memory of Dean. So, we're going to have official opening of the auditorium later on. And, and Dr. Alderelli is going to have a solo performance at the, the event. So, but although it was not completed, completely finished, but the, first, the kids performed extremely well, and also, the sound of that auditorium is amazing. And I've been in that auditorium for many, many years, and just the pure sound of the auditorium is fantastic. So, you know, good work for them, the board, to provide our students with the, a good auditorium. Just comments about the MIT Lemanson Competition. As Mr. Ross mentioned, only eight schools got selected to, to the competition. And one of the parents just commented that they needed some fees to transport these students to Boston. So, we reached out to our architect, USA Architect. They provide $1,000 to these students for going to the event. So, just want to thank them for giving back to the community. And this is what we need from all the vendors, giving back to our community. So, kudos to USA Architect. And also, there are some things that I've been seeing on the social media is about fans in the classrooms. The weather's getting hot, so, you know, they're saying, hey, we're not allowing fans in the classroom, which is incorrect. And if we are, we are short of fans, all the, all they need, the teacher need to do is tell the principal, and the fans will be provided. So, I'll let the Dr. Alderelli make some comments about the fans in the classroom.
Yeah, really quickly, Mr. Shi, we had a couple of requests in relationship to fans. I believe Mr. Toth placed an order for 150 to start, and I believe another order has been placed as well, too, based on need coming out of the buildings right there. So, as the orders come in, they will be filled. Some classrooms also have existing fans in them, like in the corner as well, too. So, we'll monitor those classrooms to determine if there's an additional need.
You have already purchased 200 fans, right?
Yep, yeah. And I, and another order is purchased. I forget the, but it's, it's over 150 would be the next, would be the next order. So, we'll probably have close to 400 fans.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Is there a policy about the fans?
There is a policy about fans, yeah. You want to?
Yeah, the policy in relationship to fans is that they have to be district purchase fans in order to utilize them, not staff, you know, if staff buys a personal fan on Amazon or in one of the stores and brings them in and plugs it in, they're not able to do that. They have to be regulated based off of.
And is there electric in, in the schools enough to cover all of the fans?
In those fans, according to Mr. Colbus, the answer to that is yes. But we'll probably put it to the test, test next week, I would imagine. Temperature looks like it's going to get up there on Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday. Thankfully, we have half-days.
Yeah, so, to, for the electricity, people, if you walk around, you will see some of these big boxes outside the schools. Those are switch gears, and some of the schools already have it. I don't know about Edison High, have we put it in yet or not? But if it's not, it's already planned to be purchased. It is to anticipate, you know, the future of air conditioning in all the classrooms. But if you look, look at it, you know, JP Stevens, the John Adams, because of the additions, the switch gear has been put it in. And they're, they're not cheap, but, you know, that's the testament of what we're going to do to the future. To, to ultimately solve the problem is putting air conditioning in all the classrooms. And I'm very happy to report because we shall mention at the committee meeting that in, in the budget, we have two schools. We're starting with JMP and Washington. And because we had a favorable bid for the JMI, we have some extra money left. So, we're going to add a JMI as part of that as well because JMP and JMI is one site. So, when you bid it together, it's one location. Yeah, we should be able to save a couple of dollars for that. So, this year, we're starting with three schools, air conditioning in all classrooms. Air conditioning in all classrooms. Thank you. Oh, switch gear, okay. Switch gear, Edison High is this summer. So, in fall, you will see a big box outside. I hope they put it in a good location, not too close to the road. Oh, in the back? Okay. All right, you'll find a place for them. All right, thank you, Mr. Ross. Any other Board Member comments? So, oh, I just want to say something that today, you all see that one of our Board Members is not here, Mr. Arico. His mom passed away over the weekend. So, condolences to his family, and may his mom rest in peace. With that said, can I have a motion to, oh, actually, we're going to have a privileged session. Right? All right. Yes. So, in accordance with NGSA Section 10.4-12, the Edison Township Board of Education adjourns to confidential session for the purpose of discussing superintendent's evaluation. We do not expect to come back, so I hope to see you guys in July. There will be a combined meeting, and I want to wish everyone a happy and safe, you know, summer break. And see you guys in July. Thank you very much. Yes. Yeah, can I have a motion to go to privileged session?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, we do not expect to come back. This is for superintendent's evaluation. Thank you.